Order calling the roll, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mr. Enos.
Present.
And Mr. Fiori is present. First item on the agenda is we have two bills payable warrants. First, for fiscal twenty-three and the amount of six thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents. It's primarily course reimbursements to faculty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing on all the favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. Then we have a fiscal twenty-four warrant in the amount of two million five hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty cents.
Motion to approve.
Uh, second on discussion, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be recorded as voting present, uh, on page number twenty-seven. I'll just pull that up here.
That's Pride Workshop.
Uh, on page twenty-seven, uh, voucher number, well, no voucher number, but P.O. number two four zero one six eight zero, in the amount of six thousand thirty-two dollars to Pride Inc., as I serve on the Board of Directors and am co-treasurer of that organization.
All right, so noted. All right, is there any further discussion on the warrant?
Travis, any more comments?
Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, just a quick comment for those who are watching the meeting. It's a large warrant, as it's over two point five million dollars, but about seventy percent, eighty percent of that is coming out of federal grants or state funds.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all the favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. Next, we have, uh, an update on, um, special education legal services. Uh, they note that they've charged one thousand seventy-seven dollars for September of twenty-twenty-three, so the total invoice to date is, uh, two thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety cents, and, uh, leaves a balance in the appropriation of forty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and ten cents. It be an order to receive and place on file.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing on all the favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're out of here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Okay, Mrs. Fagan will lead us in prayer, followed by a moment of silence.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. Also, two individuals associated with the Taunton Public Schools that I would like to pay tribute to. First is Mr. Robert Viera, who passed away on November eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Um, he was born in Providence, Rhode Island, nineteen, excuse me, nineteen sixty-six graduate of Taunton High School, but he's best known to all of us that remember him. He was the retired director of food services for the Taunton Public Schools, and I still remember the wonderful dinners he used to make, particularly his stuffed chicken breast, and he did a great job when, whenever he served a meal. That was years ago, when my oldest son was in high school. Um, he was a member of the Crystal Waters Fishing Club, the Taunton Rifle and Pistol Club. He leaves two daughters, his companion Claire Travis of years, and several grandchildren whom he enjoyed spending a lot of time with. So please keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers, Mr. Robert Viera. The second individual is, um, like family to me, my, we're related through marriages, uh, Paul F. Scully. Paul Scully was the husband of Diane Scully. He died at the age of eighty-five on November eighteenth. He was born in Taunton. To, uh, there's a lot of Sculleys in Taunton, if any of you know Taunton. He's, he went to Coyle High School, served proudly in the United States Marines, and then graduated from New Mexico State University and earned a master's degree from Assumption University. He taught high school in Canton for thirty-six years and developed and taught the school's first psychology course, and also coached a softball team to an appearance in the state finals. Most of us know him, though, as a longtime high school basketball official, refereeing state finals in all divisions and serving as vice president, president, and then commissioner for nearly thirty years for I.A.A.B.O., Board Thirty. He was pre-deceased by a brother and sister and is survived by his sister Teresa McHale, along with his wife. He's also survived by his son Christopher and his wife Elisa, and their three sons, um, Aiden Scully, Connell, and Liam Scully, and his son Daniel and his wife Bernadette, and their two sons, Jack and William Scully of Brooklyn. So, um, please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. His, his services will be held on Saturday from the O'Keefe Wade Funeral Home. And, uh, I, I would like to share one kind of a funny story. My husband and Paul Scully went to Ireland, and they took, he took his two sons, and one of my sons was his son's Chris age and graduated, and my son Daniel was Daniel Scully's age. And the funniest story I ever heard was when they all decided to go horseback riding, and I guess if you don't do horseback riding, you're not that good at it. And at one point, Mr. Scully, Paul, says to my husband, Jim, Jim, side saddle, and he side saddled, right off the house to the ground. And they, they laughed about that for years, but they had a wonderful time. So I have very fond memories of this family. Um, as I said, they're related to us through, through marriages, and, uh, really sorry for their loss. So please keep them in your thoughts and your prayers, and a moment of silence for both of these fine men. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Yep.
Could we have the roll call this?
Mr. Palowski?
Present.
Mr. Enos?
Present.
Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Mr. Niera?
Present.
Mr. George?
Present.
Dr. DeMello?
Present.
And is Mr. Laura there also?
Present.
Oh, there he is, okay.
All set. Thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, Mayor O'Connell, I didn't mean to forget you.
No, that's okay, thank you. Uh, approval of the minutes of November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to accept as stated.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Uh, we have student advisory committee report. If you want to just take a moment to introduce yourselves and give us your report.
Um, hello. My name is Julian Mandonca, and I am a member of Taunton High School Student Advisory Committee. The past few weeks have been quite eventful, so please bear with me as I try to touch upon it all. As many of you may know, the second step to the traffic relief program at our campus was planned to be implemented on November twenty-eighth, bringing with it many student concerns. The plan detailed repurposing two student parking lots into an exclusive parent pickup center zone and overflow parking for Parker Middle School and the upcoming Health Center, relocating these former parking students to a larger law on the other end of campus. Many student athletes park in these original lots, one of them being known as the Athletic Lot, since it, since it is closest to the fieldhouse and sports facilities, and these students have been voicing their concerns regarding the change. Um, this stage has become indefinitely postponed to hear input from students and other individuals its effects, and we would like to extend a thank you to everyone involved in the process for understanding some of the concerns that we bring up and taking the time to listen to them. Stemming off of this, student focus groups will be held in the first week of January at Taunton High School to discuss these campus traffic concerns and propose a compromise to approach these issues. Um, as seniors are in the depths of college application season, Taunton High's new college and career center is providing seniors with help on their applications every Tuesday after school, um, throughout the month of December. Along with this, there will be instant application days during next week for UMass, Dartmouth, and Southern New Hampshire University. If you don't know what this is, it's when the college comes to our school and allows students to apply and provide them with a decision that same day before they leave the building. We had one recently with Bridgewater, Bridgewater State University, and it was quite successful. Um, a quick thank you to Mrs. Golda for putting together these amazing opportunities. On the extracurricular front, we have our chorus concert tomorrow and our band concert on the nineteenth, both of these in the auditorium starting at seven o'clock. Anyone is welcome to come to Mr. Beltrum and the high school's performing arts team. The following weeks will also hold the middle school concert there. Our fall school musical, Shrek, was held the weekend before break, and it was outstanding. I myself was not able to go, but all of my peers who went loved it. Another congratulations to Ms. Golda and all of the students part of the production for putting on such a wonderful show. Winter sports have kicked off with the return from break as well. There was a home hockey game this week and another one away tonight in Quincy, a varsity and junior varsity girls basketball scrimmage tonight at Dartmouth, and tomorrow is the first winter track meet in Boston at the New Balance Track. Good luck to all the winter sports teams in their upcoming seasons. Triads were also held this past week, with some teams having cuts, but these students have plenty of opportunities to become a connected student through other clubs and organizations. DECA has recently held their induction ceremony and mock districts, with induction keynote speaker being our very own Superintendent Cabral, who spoke with DECA members Zachary Gay and Sophia Cabral. Class elections for the current freshman class of twenty-twenty-seven will be coming up soon, and Motivated by Math, a group who came last year to put on a performance for the former ninth through twelfth graders, will be coming back again in the following weeks to do a performance for the current eighth and ninth graders. I can say from experience that they are in for quite a treat. We are also excited to announce that Taunton High's very own Tiger Tots will be performing a holiday show on the twenty-first of December. On one final note, two of my fellow student advisory members, Natalie Duncan and Isaiah Wendell, who you may remember from past meetings, will be participating in the Southeastern Regional Student Advisory Council this upcoming Tuesday. If you don't really know what that is, this is an organization of elected representatives from across the southeastern region of the state to speak of their educational interests, opinions, and needs, which then work with DESI on these topics. A special congratulations to these two and good luck to them. That is all I have for today, but thank you so much for listening, and I hope you have a good holiday season.
Okay, well done. Thank you for that report.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, there is no public input this evening? And then E. on the, uh, agenda is community input team update, and Mr. Cabral, I think you'll introduce that.
Yeah, I'll actually, I will, I will cover it, uh, as this was an initiative, um, that I led, uh, beginning last year. Due to the feedback we received from our staff, I believe it was sometime in May, we had a large turnout of Taunton Education Association members, students, uh, families, caregivers came to express some concerns regarding the social, emotional, and mental health and well-being of our students. So I'm gonna give you a quick update. I'm not gonna read verbatim what I provided in my summary. I'm just gonna give you some key, uh, bulleted points that will reflect the different topics, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I also, before I begin, just wanna commend the school board for your participation on the CITs, because it really shows your commitment to rolling up your sleeves and getting involved at the groundwork level to make a difference and make an impact for the greater good of the Taunton Public Schools. So the first item, uh, in my summary was the handbook review, student discipline, and restarted practices. So as of today, they have met for over ten hours over the course of five meetings to review the student handbooks. The team has identified, uh, like user unfriendliness, or user unfriendliness in outdated policies and inconsistent language and policies throughout the district. So they are going to propose, or they will be proposing, to restructure the handbooks with a district-wide, uh, district-wide universals, and also other specific information that'll be specific to grade levels. So again, there'll be consistencies for the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. The aim will be, will be to make the handbooks more welcoming, more accessible, and also to ensure that they remain legally compliant. And this work will continue under our facilitator and a member of the leadership team to incorporate resources like the U.S. Department of Education's guidelines and the Massachusetts Advocacy Center materials. Next up is the therapeutic learning programs, entrance and exit criteria. Uh, this is something that has been long needed, a comprehensive review of our programs. So the work has focused on reviewing the TLC program, which is housed at the Chamberlain Elementary School and housed at the Freeman Middle School. Discussions consist on the program's components, and specifically regarding the special education referral process, as well as eligibility criteria. Recent focus has shifted to revising the referral forms and also clarifying the referral steps for staff and the personnel in charge of making those key decisions when it comes to the team meeting process. They are also evaluating the program's successes and also the needs of the program and potentially adding additional classrooms, as the TLC program services students with social, emotional disabilities or diagnosis. So you may see a shift, uh, from the SEL piece to more of the students, a shift where we, in the proposal recommendations, behavioral-type programs that, where you don't need a social, emotional, learning disability. Next up is the Taunton Alternative High School reevaluation and expansion. So this group, again, has met since, uh, September and continues to meet through the month of December. They will be reviewing the alternative high school's purpose, the demographics, and the entrance criteria. Concerns about disengaged students remains a key vocal point of their conversations, as well as how to, how to stem disciplinary issues that we're seeing at the high school, as well as at the Taunton Alternative High School. So they plan to review key data. They also have some visits lined up. I believe one of the systems they're visiting will be the Attleboro Public Schools, and they're also going to assess and learn about key strategies and new strategies on how to enhance the current program. Next is social, emotional, learning, and mental health supports. So I also provided you with some backup, because I'm gonna reference some acronyms, so if you don't know what the acronyms mean, you have the backup material at your table. So this group is meeting to review the district supports. They are analyzing the SELLUS data, bless you. Uh, SELLUS stands for Social and Emotional Learning Indicator System. They are also reviewing SABERS, and they are also reviewing DAP data. So I know it seems like a lot of data and a lot of assessments, but again, based on the feedback that we received from the staff who attended that meeting, and again, I wanna credit the thirty-five staff members from the TEA who signed up to be part of these five CITs. This is important key data so that we can understand where our students are at and then modify or change our strategies to make sure that the learning needs and the mental health needs of our students are being met. We are also going to evaluate the MINDUP implementation to make sure that the program on MINDUP, which is a tier-one support, is being implemented with fidelity throughout our, throughout the Taunton Public Schools. And I wanna credit the school committee last year for, for accepting one of our recommendations to establish reset spaces in all of our schools. So each school has one reset room, and Taunton High School has two reset rooms, so they're also gonna be evaluating the effectiveness of these spaces. And just based on my meetings with the principals and based on my resident experience at the Mulcahy School, I can tell you that this, this, um, investment in this resource is, was greatly needed, and it is paying dividends for a large number of students. We also, this group will also set social, emotional, learning goals, and again, they are going to identify tier-two and tier-three supports. Again, I provided you with backup if you're not sure what tier-two and tier-three supports look like. They will be developing recommendations to present to me, which I will present, present to the school committee, and overall plan is to integrate social, emotional, learning into every aspect of the school day throughout the school system. And then last but not least, identification and implementation of a pre-K through twelve anti-bullying character education program. The initial meetings focused on objectives and differentiation between special and regular education initiatives, discussions on existing curriculums and lack of consistent implementation. The group plans to design a survey for building administrators to better understand the current program and how things are being implemented. Currently, we use PBIS in the majority of our schools, but we wanna make sure, again, like MINDUP, that is being utilized or implemented with fidelity and consistently throughout our schools, or the schools that have adopted, uh, PBIS. And the goal will be to ensure effective and uniform implementation of the initiative across the district. Uh, that's just a quick update on where we are as we're about halfway through the school year, and these groups will continue to meet, and anything, or any recommendation that will have a budgetary impact will be sent to me and Assistant Superintendent Moynihan so that we can develop our budget priorities to share with you when we have our budget workshop. And that concludes that part of my report.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any, if there's no comments or questions, we can accept.
Motion to accept the report.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you. And then now we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So again, I'm just gonna provide you with some quick bullets, uh, to kind of summarize my superintendent's report. So, uh, very proud of the work, again, by, uh, Delilah Mendoza, who's our multilingual director, and the work taking place throughout the district, as our multilingual program has received recognition both through DESI, which is the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as a think-tank group called ERS, which is Education Resource Strategies. So this is, again, a testament to the hard work and the forward-thinking of our staff to really meet the diverse learning needs of our multilingual learners. So the transition, what, what was highlighted was a transition from our newcomer academy to our content classes with ESL-certified teachers. That is a practice that is not seen commonly throughout the state. We also received, again, positive feedback when DESI came in for a visit, a site visit, and when ERS came in for a site visit, they shared a glowing, uh, feedback with Mrs. Mendoza and her staff. And I just wanna express my gratitude to Delilah and our multilingual learner staff as it, it is, as we saw with the presentation that Mr. Barata delivered on behalf of Mrs. Mendoza. Our work, our efforts, is making a difference in the lives of our kids. Tomorrow, we have our all-admin meeting at Taunton High School from two to four, so seventy-plus district administrators will be in attendance, and the focus is gonna be a carryover from our summer all-admin retreat. We are gonna have our keynote speaker, Ayanna Cooper. She is gonna be in attendance, and we are gonna revisit our multilingual goals that administrators wrote over the summer, and we are also gonna share the presentation that Mrs. Mendoza presented to the school committee. We're gonna share that with our all-admin team. So again, we're gonna continue revisiting how to best support our multilingual learners throughout the school year. Next, I'm very proud to recognize, uh, two high school teachers, Carleen Connors and Deborah Logan, who are AP literature teachers at Taunton High School. They received the two thousand twenty-four Partners in Excellence, Excellence Teacher Award for Mass Insight Education and Research. They were among fifteen Massachusetts Advanced Placement teachers honored for their, for their work and their contributions throughout the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. The ceremony will be held April second, two thousand twenty-four, at Bentley University, which I plan to attend, and this recognition highlights Taunton High School's commitment to advancing and promoting AP, STEM, and English Language Arts programs. Also wanna share some good news regarding some funding that we received. Uh, so we also were awarded a grant for special education. The Taunton Public Schools District was awarded a federally targeted Special Education Program Improvement Grant to the tune of seventy-one thousand dollars. The funds are, will be allocated totally to professional, professional development as it relates to the new IEP format that the state will be rolling out shortly. Special thanks to Amy Moynihan, in our, our Director of Special Education, and also Catherine Latimer, who is our Director of Grants for writing the proposal, which was successfully accepted to the tune of seventy-one thousand dollars. And then just some brief talking points. So bear with me, this is my attempt at a dad joke. I was able to attend Shrek the Musical, and I wanna say it was an ogre achievement. Thank you for the laughs and entertaining me. Uh, I also wanna say that I think in your packet, if I haven't provided you with a copy of it, uh, we do have a final rendering for the lettering or the wording that will go on the outside of the East Taunton Elementary School. So if you don't have it in your packet, I apologize, but I'll provide it to you. What I'm happy to report is that the entire school was involved, so of the twenty-one classes at East Taunton Elementary School, sixteen, sixteen chose rendering number two. So the purchase order has been issued, and we, I will work with our vets, our friends at the vets, to, um, identify a date in the spring where we can have that dedication. And as our student advisory member commented, we have put a pause on any changes to the parking plans at Parker and Taunton High School. And then last but not least, two last items, uh, December. So last month, November, was Kindness Month, which was a huge success for the Taunton Public Schools. So we're gonna continue to ride that momentum into the holiday season, so you should have a sticker at your table. And if you don't, now you do.
I did, yeah, thank you, thank you.
So you should have a sticker at your table identifying that December is gonna be about giving. And a lot of times, we associate December and the holidays with gift-giving, but we know that giving goes beyond, uh, physical gifts. So there will be a PSA going out this evening, or should have been launched at five o'clock, and there'll be additional videos. So we wanna continue to spread the holiday cheer and also remind everyone, you know, there's no greater act than the act of giving, especially when it comes to helping those who are less fortunate than everything that we've been blessed to receive in our lives. And then last but not least, we heard our student advisor mention holiday concerts. In your last weekly newsletter, on the last page, you should have a listing of all the holiday concerts, if you wish to attend any of the upcoming holiday concerts between now and the holiday break. And with that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay, great. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, and that's really nice to spread that positive message to everyone.
Motion to accept superintendent's report. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
Discussion, please, discussion.
Excuse me. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, as superintendent has said, the Shrek was such a success, uh, I had the opportunity, along with, uh, Mr. Viera, Mrs. Fagan, Mr. Laura, to attend set, this performance. But I, I just want to possibly expand this out to the senior community in the future. Uh, I mean, it, it's, it's an opportunity that we can bring, uh, hundreds of seniors to see this performance at, at no cost to them possibly, and it, it's, 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 it's right in their backyard. I know that we at the university bring seniors to, to Boston for performances and so forth, and it's so costly, and it's, 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 it's a, it's a very expensive day. So maybe we can think about that in the future to have a special performance for the seniors as they're preparing for the main stage, so I just wanted to throw that out there for future consideration. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next we go to G. Administrative Business Staffing Report. Do we?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And then Taunton Public Schools Staffing Update.
So in your packet, I provide you with a breakdown. I am happy to report that we have five schools that are a hundred percent staffed. Uh, I did meet with the Human Resource Department regarding Taunton High School, as I have some concerns regarding Taunton High School being stuck at that number seven over multiple meetings, so we're gonna look at the applicant pool and also work with the high school hiring managers in the multiple, various departments to make sure that they are reviewing the files and doing the best they can to get that number down to the other schools, which are all down to two and one. So we'll continue to work with the high school and their hiring managers. And again, the high school's different in the sense that each department, which are, there are eleven departments at the high school, they're responsible for the hiring, and then Principal Holcomb and Assistant Principal Bollino will meet with the finalists as the final approval.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Field trip request is next.
So you should have received an updated, uh, packet, and I had it, I had the page tagged with an orange postie that was different, because I believe Dr. DeMello brought it to my attention that the, the pure pupil cost was different on both forms, so you do have the updated, uh, version of the packet, and we are only seeking preliminary approval this evening.
Motion to approve preliminary.
Motion, second. On discussion, Mr. Fiori?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanna say I'm delighted to see this happening, because I've been advocating for connections with, uh... with historically black colleges and universities for years. We've tried to encourage recruitment of faculty, and I was involved in giving a scholarship to one of our graduates here at Taunton High a couple of years ago. I also feel a personal connection with a couple of the college presidents because Dr. Benjamin May, who was the president of Morehouse College when Martin Luther King went there, graduated from Bates College, as did I, and more recently, Spelman College in Atlanta was presided over by Dr. Beverly Daniel Tatum, who's the daughter of Dr. Robert Daniel from Bridgewater State. So I'm glad to see our community is recognizing that these colleges are worth visiting and worth recruiting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fiori. And I'd like to take a moment while we're, you know, discussing this to thank April Funches and Carla Hands for all of the work they've done to put this together. It was a lot of work, and our office worked with them to help fund this trip. So we are really looking forward to this being approved and to having these students have this really wonderful experience where they can go visit these colleges. Mr. George?
I just want to second what you said, Mrs. Mayor. Carla Hands and April Funches have done so much work, and I really appreciate it. The kids are lucky to have you guys as their, you know, chaperones. I know April is an HBCU alumni, so it would be nice for her to show the kids around and bring some new experiences to kids in time.
Yes. So, all right, so there is a motion on the floor and a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. I want to pause for a moment because I believe we, at the last meeting, you all had invited the two members-elect to sit at the table with you. So we could do that now if the school committee wishes.
Motion to allow them.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. If you could please join us, we'd love to have you up here with us. Thank you. And that would be, of course, Donna Shaw's and Melissa Santos. Okay, back to business. Number four, vote to approve the new REEDS member districts.
Just a little background. So I'm serving as the president of the REEDS Collaborative Board, and I'm the only, or Taunton is the only urban district that participates in REEDS Collaborative. So at the 1116 meeting, the board members approved to welcome Whitman Hansen Regional Public School District and Brockton Public School District to be members of the board. So the board has voted, but the next step is to have the school committee of each of the represented board members vote to accept Brockton and Whitman Hansen into, to be part of the collaborative. I think the last time this happened was with South Coast Collaborative, where we accepted Fall River and New Beffet into the collaborative. And one of the questions that was raised, what is the, what would be the capacity, potential impact on our students, and also would there be any impact on our costs? And the way this will work is, if accepted today, Brockton and Whitman Hansen will continue to pay the non-member rate for the rest of this year. They would then begin paying the member rate starting fiscal '25. So there would be no impact to the collaborative as far as potentially operating in a deficit because they're going to continue collecting the same fees from all the districts that are sending students based on those calculations that they forecasted or they submitted for fiscal '24. So as the only urban district that participates in REEDS and one of three urban districts that participate the South Coast, there is a huge benefit to having more urbans being part of the collaborative because it builds out our capacity and our ability to serve our students. So I would hope that the board would entertain this motion or make this motion to allow Whitman Hansen and Brockton to be members of the REEDS Collaborative.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So just to be clear, there's no additional cost. Fee to Taunton Public Schools will be exactly the same.
We will continue to pay the membership fee, and then starting fiscal '25, whatever the COLA increase is, will be applied to everyone.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. All right, and next we have REEDS Collaborative Annual Report.
Received and placed on file.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiori.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening with myself, Dr. DeMello, and Mr. Enos. We considered two bills payable warrants. First one for fiscal '23 in the amount of $6,314.25. That was primarily course reimbursements for teachers who did continuing education and did not have their receipts in time to be able to meet the last fiscal year. And then fiscal '24 warrant in the amount of $2,525,398.40. Dr. DeMello has to be recorded as present with regard to a warrant for Pride Incorporated on whose board he serves. Then we also received a memorandum updating expenses on special education legal services for the month of September. They billed $1,077. So for a year-to-date total, now we have $2,434.90, and there's still a balance in the fund of $47,565.10. And then we adjourned.
Thank you. Is there a motion to?
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion and second on discussion. Mrs. Fagan?
I'd like to be voted as present on voucher number 21548 on page 15 for $39.82. Get all approval for the rest of it.
Thank you. So this is motion and second.
Can you include that in?
Absolutely. Include it in the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So voted. We will move on to new business. There is no new business listed.
I had a question.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Superintendent Cabral, do you know when we'll have an enrollment update? I know we spoke about it at the last meeting. When do you think we can get that on the agenda?
Did you receive one for December yet? No? All right, so I'll have one for the next meeting. So the goal moving forward will be to have one per month. I'll preface, I'll try to do it beginning of the month. Actually, no, I'll do it at the end of the month because by then we'll have better numbers because of students moving in and out. So at the end of each month, so the second meeting of each month, you'll get an enrollment update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barata, Mrs. Glasser, can we get your please?
Unfinished business. Number one, Hopewell School Future Usage Assessment.
So I won't read the memo verbatim, but I will just kind of summarize what you asked. I believe, I believe this came out of a long-range planning subcommittee. So we were asked, or the administration was asked, to seek a cost analysis, to conduct a comprehensive assessment of the Hopewell School in order to make the best determination regarding potential use. So the Hopewell School, just a little background, is just under 32,000 square feet, and the building was constructed in 1914. And Beta, who has a contract with the city of Taunton, provided us with the quote. The quote came out for a comprehensive assessment. The quote was $255,000. This would include a structural assessment, an architectural assessment, an accessibility assessment, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing assessment, hazardous material survey, and also a fee for compiling the report. On the back of the memo, I also asked Assistant Superintendent Moynihan and Director of Facilities Mark Freitas to dig up the old SOI, which is a statement of interest that we submitted to the MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Because at one point, this building was submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority as a core, which would be a replacement project for new school, as well as an accelerated repair project to bring up to grade, up to code, some of the key life safety features. So you'll see the bulleted items. One of the recommendations in the SOI would entail a complete overhaul of the heating system. Roof replacement. Currently, only half of the roof is replaced, and I believe I shared with you that Superintendent of Buildings, Chris Carmichael, has a quote to replace the other half of the roof, which is about $110,000, which would be something that the school department would have to take on. Window replacement of windows that are over 100 years old. Door replacement. Update the 100-year-old electrical system. I do not believe that building has a fire suppression system, and it probably would also need a new fire alarm system. ADA standards, which would require installing an elevator. Replace the intercom system. Update the security system. The building was identified as not having storage. Any of you who have toured that building or remember walking that building? The hallways on the second and third floor had makeshift closets or office space that was built into the hallways to accommodate staff. And I can speak from personal experience. My wife, a school psychologist, had one of those hallway closets that she used as her office when she worked at the Hopewell School. To replace the aging playground, if we were going to use it for student purposes or school purposes, we would have to update the technology infrastructure. We would have to update the school and current technology that is in all the classrooms. Repave and stripe the parking lot. Replace cracked tiles in the classrooms, hallways, teachers' rooms, and nurses' office, which I believe may contain asbestos. So now we're getting into abatement measures. Replace damaged flooring and ceiling tiles throughout the school, as well as furnishing all classrooms with new technology and furniture. So it was helpful to go through the SOI because it reminded us of why we closed that building and consolidated it with Mulcahy. So I know there is some desire to talk about potential use or adding more space to the Taunton Public Schools, but if that's, this is something that the committee wishes to discuss, obviously, we can always put it on the agenda item. But in my opinion, looking at the cost, I believe, I don't believe this would be good money, I don't believe this would be the best use of our resources. But again, that's with the committee to decide, and you have the information at your fingertips.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For clarification purposes too, and for the public at home, other things that were discussed in that meeting were the possibility of an alternative middle school, early childhood education expansion, eighth-grade academy, if those were possibilities. So I just want to be clear, it wasn't just for the fact of declaring that we had a 100-year-old building. You know, the city's recently purchased a 70-year-old building that may be used for educational purposes as well. So I guess the question is, is there an appetite? Again, we go over all the time that we're busting at the seams for space, yet, you know, is that part of our long-term plan or isn't it?
So if you were going to ask me for my opinion right now with that building, I think there may be other possibilities with the potential use of Kohanit, the third floor, which is 27,000 square feet, that we are discussing potential use, whether it's classroom use or office space, which then frees up space in our buildings to do some of the work or some of the programs that you discussed, Mr. Viera. And I apologize for bringing that up because that was the main reason why we're analyzing the building, because we do want to grow and expand our programs. But there may be, there may be other potential uses because our resources are limited and our SO dollars are going away at the end of fiscal '24.
So why do we have to make a hasty decision when I can't refer it back to a long-range plan and for further evaluation?
And that's not for, that's not for me to decide. That's something that the committee needs to decide. But again, my opinion, to conduct a study to the $200,000 to $300,000, I, without going through a full analysis, I do believe an elevator, for example, you're probably talking close to $500,000 to $700,000. So it would exceed six figures to bring that building up to code.
So the two and a half million number, you're not sure if you didn't, I know it was a?
I think the two and a half million number that Mr. Freitas came up with, I think once we do a, I think once we do a comprehensive assessment, it might, it probably would come in higher. Would be my fear.
I'd recommend sending it back to long-range plan, and if it's the pleasure of the sport.
Thank you. Superintendent Cabral, could I just ask a question? How long has that school been closed? Because I think you mentioned making a hasty decision.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so we closed, good question. I believe when we, 2000, I believe it was 2019, 2020 is when we closed the building and opened the Mulcahy School in 2020, '21. Because I know that building was closed when we merged with Mulcahy, but we also had the pandemic. So it's been closed for nearly four years. It did serve a purpose during the pandemic. We did utilize it as swing space because we needed after-school care during the pandemic. So we did have our extended day program there. And we do have a city agency, the YMCA, which is using that space while their facility undergoes a rather large reconstruction or remodel. So the building has served its purpose and continues to serve a purpose as swing space. But to bring it up to code, I'm afraid it would cost several million dollars.
I was just curious. I couldn't remember how long it was closed. Mrs. Fagan?
Didn't we have the Alternative High School over there for a while too, using that space?
The Alternative High School was there during the accelerated repair project. I want to say almost a year and a half.
Yeah. All right. I, if that's a motion, I'll.
Yeah.
So can you make the actual motion?
Motion to refer back to long-range plan and Public Properties Subcommittee.
You know, if you look at all the places, all the people that are moving into the city, I'm afraid we're going to have a problem at some point, even at that kind of money. I mean, we have to try to find land and then try to, you know, I know, I've served on every one of those building committees, and the money is phenomenal, you know? I just, I don't know. And then the other question I have too, along those lines, will you talk about something being on the National Register of Historic Places? Can you just take buildings like that down?
I don't think there's been any discussion about taking it down, but no, I think if it's on the National Register, it would be a process.
And I believe it triggers certain requirements with any remodeling as well.
Yeah, actually, it certainly does.
I wouldn't mind looking at it again if I don't have a whole second and a half motion.
Mr. Fiori?
I'd like to say, I mean, I'm glad that in the time I've been in city government, we've replaced a number of schools. But one regret that I've had is that we have had some viable buildings that were left that did not get taken care of afterward and have essentially fallen into waste. And it'd be nice if, and we know that Hopewell is a good structure, and I just don't want to see it go by the boards, but may not be able to, may not be worth upgrading to code. But on the other hand, I want to see it maintained so that it's usable because we've, you know, we've had Leonard School, which has basically been falling apart for years. We had a couple of other buildings that have, that have closed. Here, we've got a viable structure that just wasn't meeting the need that it was built for, but it doesn't mean that we don't have a future use for it, and I want to see it maintained as well as possible.
Okay. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. So correct me if I'm wrong, in 2011, there was?
All of these issues that were identified, and yet, we're in 2023 and nothing was done. So I came onto the school committee in 2017, I believe. How did this fail to be acknowledged and dealt with since 2011? And my concern is because we have older buildings in the, in the system, and if we don't continuously create a preventive maintenance plan, which I believe we do have one, but, you know, in 2011, we identified all these issues, but yet, in 2023, they're all coming to light.
Could I comment? So the, to answer your question, Dr. DeMello, this building was never accepted by the MSBA as a core repair project or accepted by the MSBA as an accelerated repair project. And because of the number of repairs or the cost of the repairs, that was not something that the school department at that time could take on. It would have been something that we would have had to partner with the MSBA in order to bring that building up to code, similar to how we've done with Bennett. You'll notice at Bennett, we have new windows, a new roof, Galligan, new windows, new roof, new heating system. The Martin School, the same thing. So that's how we've been able to maintain our older buildings, thanks to the MSBA, which pays about 80 cents on the dollar. So this, again, this program, this building, was submitted year after year, going probably prior to 2011, as an accelerated repair slash core project. But when the Mulcahy project was accepted and the MSBA came to visit the Taunton Public Schools, their recommendation was to merge both schools. Originally, the recommendation from the school department was to merge three schools into one, Galligan, Hopewell, and Mulcahy. But the MSBA, their recommendation was to keep Galligan open, which we did, and then recommendation was to keep Galligan open, which we did, and then we submitted accelerated repairs, and those were accepted. And the City of Taunton graciously, school department and city council graciously approved those recommendations, and they're still paying for those, for that remodeling. And Mulcahy was built to the two hundred and sixty-five million dollars, and Hopewell was closed. So that's, that's the history. So it wasn't neglected on purpose. There was a plan. It was just never accepted.
Right. And, you know, it's pointed out that half the roof was replaced, so we knew that the other half needed to be replaced in sometime in two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen, but yet that was never addressed. So my comment is not to blame anybody that this wasn't addressed since two thousand eleven, but we need to make sure that our newer buildings or any future buildings, we continuously make sure we have the preventive maintenance plan in place so that this doesn't happen and we're faced with, you know, a dilapidated building that we can no longer use. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion on the table, and there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Next is Two Hamilton Street, motion from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So in your packet, I provided you with a summary of the opinion that Attorney Gay provided. So his recommendation, without going into great detail, would be if the committee wishes to discuss the potential, I think it was, I believe the motion was transfer of the Two Hamilton, purchase transfer of the Two Hamilton Street property to the Taunton Public Schools and to authorize the superintendent to have a discussion with the mayor or staff, that that should be a motion made to add that as a future agenda item.
I make a motion to put it on the agenda for December twentieth on next meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Number three, update on visit to examine rooftop and canopy solar systems.
I'm losing my breath, but I'll try to be succinct. So on, I believe it was November seventeenth, we visited two communities, and I just want to, again, extend my gratitude to Fall River Superintendent Maria Ponce, and Dayton Rehoboth Superintendent Bill Roney, as well as their Director of Facilities, Damian Preston, and Kent Pacheco for their hospitality. We literally got to walk the roof in Fall River, which I thought was pretty neat. And it really opened our eyes and answered our questions regarding weight load, regarding costs, safety, potential savings, specifics regarding performance contracts, long-term maintenance requirements, and the day-to-day upkeep. But most importantly, it was really interesting to hear how a city and a town, their responsibilities when it comes to the day-to-day operation and management of a canopy system and a rooftop system. So we have a lot of information. I think it would be advantageous to list this as a, as a future agenda item. I don't know if the twentieth makes sense, or if we wait until the seventeenth when we have the two new board members on board to help us make a, you know, a comprehensive decision moving forward. So wishes of the committee.
I make a motion to put it on the December twentieth agenda to discuss the possibility of, obviously, replacing the new roof. Roof is needed on the, one of the Norton Avenue schools, as well as solar, and invite the CFO, the solar consultant, Matt Parent, the building superintendent, Chris Carmichael, Captain Bassett from the Fire Department, and anyone else. I think one of the councils is a big, Phil Dewatt, Council Dewatt is very proactive in the renewable energies.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second, the motion.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, please?
None opposed. I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello. It's a little difficult with you not here, but yes, please.
So I, once again, I don't know why we'd have to make a decision on December twentieth when we have two new committee members coming in in January. Is that what the motion states? I didn't hear it very clearly.
Is it okay?
It was December twentieth.
There's a motion to put it on for discussion December twentieth and invite certain people in to that meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Enos?
Yes, correct.
Mrs. Fagan?
Isn't that the night we do a Christmas party also?
Before.
Before?
In my evaluation.
Yeah, I think there's an awful lot on the plate for that night.
What we get paid for.
You have no appetite to wait until the first of the year?
No, the members.
I mean, I think this has been sitting around for a long time. There's been a lot of discussion on it. There's been multiple meetings on it, and the committee may want to make a decision on it.
Correct.
Right. And that's, and I'm still on discussion, and that's why the discussion, the meeting that makes a decision that's going to impact the future of the students of Taunton and the citizens of Taunton should have an educated, informed decision made by the new committee members that will be sitting as of January second, which is only twelve days or thirteen days after the December twentieth meeting. That's my only point.
Well, what I would say is that the committee members that are here now are the ones that have been involved in this and have the information and have attended those meetings and will be able to make a decision. Should, you want them, excuse me, should they want to, should the committee want to make a decision on that date?
And with all due respect, Mayor, out of the people that went to visit these buildings, none of them that are leaving are, were there for the site visits. So Mr. Fiori was not there, Mr. George was not there. So I think it's important to note that Mrs. Schabbs was there as a non-elected person, but as a committee-elect. So again, being informed and making the right decision is what I think is most important to the future of the City of Taunton.
That is great. Glad you were there. Mrs. Schabbs, thank you for attending. So there, now, I mean, we just had that vote. Did, did you vote when we just did that motion, Mr. DeMello?
I'm sorry?
We just had the motion. I called it as passed. Did you vote when we just passed Mr. Enos's motion?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear the vote being called, so my, my response is no.
Okay. So we will, we will do that motion. Mr. Enos, if you could, well, is everyone clear on the motion?
Can you read, just read it back, please?
You made a motion to revisit, to put on the agenda of the twentieth, of December twentieth, to, to discuss about the visit that you made to the roofing company and people.
The new, the Norton Avenue School with the roof that needs to replace, as well as the solar system on top of the building, inviting the CFO, the solar consultant, Matt Parent, the building superintendent, Chris Carmichael, Captain Bassett from the Fire Department, and Council Dewatt.
So there's a motion, second. Mr. George?
Yes, I would just like to respond to the comment as well. If we, if we were allowed to zoom into the meeting, I would have definitely been on the roof with everybody, but unfortunately, I did have to work as that was an option. So I just wanted to make that aware.
Thank you for making us aware of that because you're, you're correct. Some people do have to work or have other commitments and can't attend those things. So.
Well, like, excuse me, Mayor, but as Mr. Enos said, that's what we get paid for, is to do our job, okay? So please don't use the remarks that Mr. Enos says we're doing our job to be there as long as we need to be, which I understand. I have no problem with that. But also, if we're acting in due diligence, we need to make exceptions, like I do, to ask for personal time, vacation time, to make these exceptions, to do the best thing in the interest of the City of Taunton and the students of Taunton.
Mr. George, again, thank you for making the comment that you were unable to attend because you had to work. And did you want to say something further?
Yes, I'm just pointing out the fact that Mr. DeMello would not be at this meeting if it was not for the Zoom opportunity. So if that's not provided to everybody based on every visit or option, it might not, should not be provided to people that cannot make this meeting, so.
Thank you, Mr. George.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Massachusetts General Law, Mr. George, that we are allowed to still meet through Zoom, Mr. George. So please familiarize yourself with Massachusetts General Laws. Thank you.
I do recall as a team, we did agree that there were meetings unless we voted on them, we should not be present during Zoom. Did we not have that discussion?
Don't recall that, Mr. George.
Alright. Well, I do recall that.
Thank you, Mr. George. Alright, motion and second. I believe we should do this on a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Viera?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr., I mean, Dr. DeMello?
No.
And is, is Mr. Laura still there?
I am here. Yes, I'm listening.
Get to the camera. Yes, I'm here.
You gonna vote on this?
I'm gonna vote on it as soon as my name is called.
Oh, I, I'm calling you right now.
Okay, and, just say, Mr. Laura? No.
And I vote yes. So five, and the motion passes. Okay, next we have Parker Middle School and Taunton High School LED signage.
So in your packet, I provided you with the recommendation regarding the signage at the Taunton High School, and I apologize, I got a little bit of ahead of myself, and I included the Parker Middle School getting a sign, but the immediate need is Taunton High School. So the recommendation that I would, the motion that I would seek tonight would be to authorize the administration to purchase a replacement sign for the Taunton High School in the amounts of, in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which was obtained through three quotes. And the three, two vendors provided quotes, one vendor was non-responsive, but the twenty-three thousand nine hundred fifty-seven is the lowest quote that was, that was received. And per chapter thirty B, we are obligated to go with the responsive, lowest quote.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral, for sticking with just updating the sign for Taunton High School. It's much appreciated. Is there any way, can we get a render and what the sign's gonna look like before we vote on it? Is that an unreasonable request? I mean, I generally, I'm a visual guy. I'd like to see the dimensions, the height, the size, and unless I missed it in the packet, I mean, again, you guys are like a good law firm here with the size of your packets, so.
So what I have here is, and again, if you, if you want to hold off on this vote, that's again, to wishes of the committee. But the Stewart sign will be four by two and seven-ten high. So I believe it's going to be larger than the current existing sign, and the rendering will look very similar. But I don't want to put Mr. Jakes on the spot, but if the committee wants to hold off on this vote, then I can provide, again, with this same information, teasing out the high school and including the quote, as well as a rendering of what the committee would be voting on.
Do you think the twentieth would be, I mean, is that gonna hold things up if we wait till our next meeting and have a render?
I would feel more comfortable knowing that the committee knows what they're voting on.
I feel the same way.
If that's the wishes of the committee.
Motion to revert, refer to the December twentieth meeting?
With a, with a render.
With a rendering.
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Taunton High School Advisory Update.
So just provided you with some information. So based on the advisory meeting, three topics came up from our students, and two of them centered on food, breakfast and lunches. So I provided you with some information. The high school made a change that instead of having the students go to the cafeteria and grab lunches, they made some modifications. And you'll notice on the data that I provided you, those changes have resulted in a substantial increase in the amount of breakfasts that are being served at the high school. That's on the first page. And on the second page, we also provided you with a breakdown regarding meals that are being served at the elementary and the middle schools. And also, on the last page, provided you with quality control initiatives that will be taking place to ensure that the french fries are not coming out dry and that the french fries aren't coming out cold. So we do plan on also implementing a, you know, Chef Ramsay's secret chef-type experience where we will be visiting random lunches and experiencing the food for ourselves to make sure that the people that are in charge of providing quality meals to our students are maintaining high quality when it comes to the food we serve our kids. And I hope to, I hope when we meet with the student advisory students again in the near future, Mr. Pelosi, we gotta schedule that. So I'll work with you on that, that the feedback we get from the kids is greatly improved. And the only item I wasn't prepared to provide you feedback on was the steps we are taking to put practices and systems in place when it comes to students who are abusing the cell phone policy at the high school. I believe we are close to being able to strategically address this student by student.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do we have any business on the action item update?
None at this time that I can see.
Okay. There is no press here this evening, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone.